We're back on the record in the cab. Gibson is available for confirmation by board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were joking at the break that what are the odds of coming before tribunal and having two former administrators of the Department of Industrial Relations at Hamdul's Workers' Comp for you? So there is one thing I think I need to clarify. You had testified that you were advised that you are required to provide workers compensation for your leased drivers or show that they are doing that because they are doing the same job as employees, which I guess would be employee drivers.
Yes.
Correct. And in the two certificated companies that you operate, are there a mix of leased drivers and employee drivers, or do you separate them?
There are leased independent contractors that are leased with Henderson as well as employee drivers, and the same thing with Whittlesey Blue Cab, we offer both.
Okay, so they're mixed.
Yes.
So the inference that Mr. Balaban may be in violation of that law is not an apples-to-apples comparison, is my understanding, and if I'm wrong, I don't want to bring them up on the stand, but you understand, all leased drivers are with Virgin Valley Cab Company and all employee drivers are with Desert Cab Company. Is that correct?
I would ask that you ask George that question because I know that Virgin Valley is all leased, but I don't know if Desert has lease and employee.
Well, I think that's good enough for me. I wanted to clarify the differences or the potential differences in situation, so our record doesn't reflect that somehow we should be looking at another certificated carrier for a violation of Nevada law. Okay, with respect to your testimony, and I believe you alluded to this, but your two companies have how many medallions?
511 combined.
And do you regularly put 511 cabs out on the street?
No.
And I understand there's some economic conditions, but are cars available for you to be able to put 511 cars on the street?
No. We actually purchased, September of last year, we purchased 50 Ford Escapes directly from Ford. No dealership, not even going through just our fleet contacts, directly from the factory. J.J. Bell placed that order in September of last year for 50 vehicles, the first of which did not start arriving until June of this year. So we were waiting nine months for an order directly from the factory, and to make matters even worse, we recently contacted Ford directly, wanting to, as a fleet, go ahead and put another order in, and we were told that there's an appellate process going on right now because they're telling us they will only give us five cars every quarter versus us being able to order just however many we wanted, because we wanted to order another 70 cars, because it took so long to get the 50 in. So getting vehicles, now we purchased ours new, and we pay cash for ours, and even with our discount, each of those cars that we purchased last September was $31,000 apiece, but even with all of that, they are unwilling to just give us the go-ahead. It has to go through an appeals process within Ford's higher ranks to determine whether or not they're going to be willing to give us more than five every quarter.
Hmm, okay. Have you investigated buying used vehicles?
Brent Bell and J.J. Bell both looked into that, and they didn't feel, number one, it was cost-effective, number two, that we were going to get any better response on being able to purchase a large number of vehicles, and they've actually purchased vehicles in Phoenix and a few other cities when we had trouble getting them right, you know, after COVID, but we can't get the volume that we need, you know, it's just not happening right now.
Okay. And there are some questions back and forth between you and the applicant regarding hiring drivers. Walk me through what that market is.
Well, we are currently advertising with Intuit, we advertise through different web-based applications that geofence existing drivers in certain areas, kind of like how Uber and Lyft geofences the airport, and you get that text, you know, before you even get off the plane, you know, do you want an Uber to come pick you up? We're doing a lot of really innovative things to try to reach out to people outside of the existing permitted drivers in Clark County. We recently hired a company called Intuitive, which literally is a headhunting service, but they headhunt for these types of things, trucking companies, you know, fleet drivers, and we recently just signed a contract with them. We're doing all of this to try to increase the driver pool. A person can come in and fill out an application. They don't have to wait for an appointment for an interview. They come in, they fill out the application, they're brought up to see me. If they have not brought in their DMV printout, we ask them to get it as soon as possible and get it to me because we require zero points on your DMV printout for a period of three years. If, once I've talked with the individual, I have an inkling that, you know, they're a warm body, they look like they're going to be presentable, they look like they're going to be a safe driver, I send them down for a drug test. Once they go through the drug test, their DOT physical, then they actually have to attend a safety class after doing a road assessment test. If they get through all of that, then we issue them a referral, and they go down and see Mr. Armstrong and his staff to see if they can actually be permitted. So it is, it's a lot easier to hire somebody that has already had a permit in Clark County, but if we continue to do that, we're never going to grow the number of drivers. So we've got to start doing different things. We're offering a referral program where we'll give one of our drivers cash if he can refer someone that has not driven before and bring them into the industry. So, you know, we are seeing some Uber and Lyft people that were not prior taxi cab drivers that just went into driving for the TNCs start coming in, and we're getting a few of those people coming in to apply, which is good for us because it means that we might start getting some of those drivers, you know, that decided they wanted to drive but didn't want to drive cab into our industry.
Are you ever in a situation where you have medallions, cars, and no drivers?
Occasionally, yeah. We can be in that situation on a Friday or Saturday night when every guy that wants to work is out on the road. We have a lot of part-time drivers, and, you know, if they show up, and we've got a car and a medallion, they're, they're out on the road. Doesn't matter if it's 10:00 AM, 4:00 PM, if you want to go to work, we'll go ahead and put you to work. But there are, there have been a few occasions when it's really busy that nobody else walks in the door, and I've got a key hanging there on the board, and that's not a good day.
So that, but you say that on a few occasions?
Yes.
It's not commonplace?
Correct.
Okay. Some questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
So first of all, I will recognize you for an outstanding recitation of the NRS. Your attorney should be paying you. That was really not easy to remember and very impressive.
I object to that.
That objection, that objection's going to be sustained because we don't want to get into how long it took to prepare her.
They just took credit away, to be sure. Okay, so let's, let's talk about, you mentioned in withholding medallions that sometimes you reduce the number of medallions on the road intentionally in order to make sure that drivers can find enough rides to earn enough so that they stay, they maintain a permit and they stay in the business. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Okay, do you actively manage that? And is there a formula, or is there some way you actively manage that?
Well, it's, it's more based on what happened last week on a Monday, you know, with the exception of if there's a special event or there's something unique in town, we run average book reports, we run shift reports, and in the same manner by which we used to come before the board and ask for allocation for a temporary event that would be happening in town, that's pretty much how, at my companies, we look at, okay, last Monday, you know, the average per shift was, you know, say $300, and we had this many cars out, well, is there anything going on this Monday? No, it's a pretty average Monday. All right, we know we can put out at least that money, but if I get 10 guys that walk in the door that want to go ahead and go to work, I'm going to let those 10 guys go to work, even if it's a Monday, simply because I believe that at $300 a shift, that's a sustainable book for a driver to make a decent wage. At my companies, they average about 43% commission, so that's still, you know, if, if those numbers were to drop and the average revenue per shift is hitting, you know, $170, $180, I need to take a serious look at what I'm doing because there's only so much out there for these guys to split up, and, you know, flooding the market, that's exactly what that would do.
So let's say, let's just, for purposes of discussion, let's say you manage 10% up or down, and you've got approximately 500 and something medallions, so you're talking five more or less drivers on the road, this may or may not be realistic, but, but when I get to the context, the context is, no matter how well you manage that within your company, you've got a company like YCS, and if they're 10% up or down with 1,500 medallions amongst them, they're up or down 15 drivers, that kind of blows your numbers out of the water, so no matter how well you manage it within your own company, isn't the impact going to be what other companies are doing and what the public's doing and what TNCs are doing on any given day? So can you really manage that to the point where the competition from 35 additional medallions is going to be, is going to have that much of an impact?
Well, it isn't so much the competition of 35 medallions taking necessarily just trips away from my existing drivers, it is part of my driver pool as well. Whether it's 35 or 70, the bottom line is, based on the evidence that I've heard, the applicant hasn't brought forth anything that is going to say, I'm going to attract new drivers into the industry by doing this, this, and this. It is simply, I want a cab company, I want 35 cars, I'm going to do what everybody else is doing, and I don't think that that's necessary.
So has Desert provided you with that recently?
Has Desert provided me with what?
Well, their plan to attract drivers from outside of the...
Oh, no, I compete against Desert.
Well, theoretically, you'd be competing against Independent as well, though, right?
Yes.
So they, so no one's provided you, none of your competition have provided you with any of that?
With what they do?
Their plan to...
To try to get drivers?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. So is it fair to say that there would be competition from Independent if they were granted permits?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Can you tell me in any way how that competition would be detrimental?
I just believe that cannibalizing my drivers to furnish his driver pool is detrimental to my company.
Okay, and you mentioned that before, I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Yes, I've got one. Ms. Gibbons, do you remember when Freeas went out of business?
I do.
I can't remember the year, do you?
Yeah, I don't remember the year off the top of my head, but I do remember when that happened.
Well, I remember what happened.
2018, 2017, 2019, thank you, Mike.
So it was three years ago, yeah. Did your companies get any of those assets?
Well, Whittlesey Blue Cab, the Bell family, as well as the Balaban family, purchased Virgin Valley Cab, which was renamed to Blue Desert, and then subsequent after that, that asset was sold back to the Balaban family. So for a short time, we shared in the ownership of Virgin Valley Cab with the Balaban family, and then we sold our interest to George.
Have any idea how many cabs that Freeas had out on the street? How many medallions, I guess is the word?
Well, I would have to look it up, but I can get you that information before the end of the hearing if you'd like. Yes, yes, yes.
That's really all I had, thank you.
Ms. Gibson, do you recall Mr. Carson's question about, questions about experience?
I'm sorry.
Do you recall Mr. Carson's questions about what kind of experience is necessary to operate under the statute and the rest? Is it your testimony that the only person or persons who would be qualified by reason of experience to obtain a certificate have to have been employed in the industry?
No.
I have one follow-up. Okay. Along the same lines, if, if Mr. Carson had hired you as a consultant to write his pro forma and put in it everything based on your knowledge and experience and expertise in the industry, put everything in there I need to do to make this company solvent, and I will capitalize that, you had, and he had submitted that document, would you still oppose his application?
Yes, because I don't believe that at 35 medallions, either the employee model or the lease model can be profitable for Mr. Carson. So I would have given Mr. Carson, as, as I'm sure Brent and J.J. Bell would have, the same advice that George Balaban gave him, that when you're operating a very small number, your overhead is almost non-existent, you can operate it out of your house, you could have, you know, Brent could be the mechanic, there's, you know, similar to what Rick Flavin attempted to do with Boulder Cab in the very beginning when he received that certificate, or very large, you know, when you've got a large number of vehicles, you're going to be generating enough revenue to offset a lot of the upfront expense and the ongoing expenses that it takes to operate one of these companies. Anywhere in between, it's very risky, and so, I mean, if Mr. Carson would have hired me and said, Cheryl, what do you think, what do we need to do, I would have given him different advice.
So is there a scenario in which, whether Katana decided it was 80 or 90 in reference to my question to Mr. Balaban about what number, if there is such a number, makes a company solvent, if he had requested that number, would you then support his application? And you had written a pro forma?
Well, if he were to provide the same application, say, you know, 150 cabs, with the same business model in that he's not offering anything new to the industry, it's literally, I just want a cab company, I can't show that you guys are unwilling to meet the need, I just, this is what I want to do, then yes, I would have to oppose that because I don't believe that there's been evidence to show an unmet need, and I don't believe that there is a need right now in Clark County for one more medallion, 35 medallions, 70 medallions at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next witness.
Rico, come on up.
Mr. Chaffington?
Yes.
I have a question now.
Okay.
The question is, did this witness ever work for the Taxi Cab Authority?
Yes.
He cannot speak on anything relative to the authority pursuant to statute. If you go there, you will get an objection from me.
That's fine, I'm not going there.
Okay.
Yeah.
The tension in the room.
You're halfway up and you had to stop. Hold on.
He took some pictures, I'm talking to him about pictures. Come on up, Rico.
Okay. Don't know when I'm, when I go there.
Mr. Armstrong.
I would hope, I would hope not.
It's Mr. Costantino.
Mr. Costantino, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give to the Taxi Cab Authority Board of the State of Nevada will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can I call up with what Mr. Armstrong just said? Because I think he's right on point, I don't think, he has to ask, they had to have asked for permission under NAC 706-888 subsection 5 as to whether or not this witness can come forward. I don't, you can't...
That is, that is a question in terms of what is going on at this particular point, but as the administrator of Taxi Cab Authority, I don't have a problem in terms of allowing this witness to testify things that are outside the scope of his employment as a Taxi Cab Authority, because to a certain extent, I can't limit his ability to make a living, nor can I limit his ability to testify on matters that are no longer a part of Taxi Authority. You have to understand, he is not, at this time, an employee of the Authority, but he has no right to testify about anything relative to what he has been doing relative to the Authority. That is where my authority then ends at that particular point. Since you're calling him for other purposes and he's working for someone else, or is a consultant for someone else, I can't say anything about that, but if he's interspersing his Taxi Cab Authority experience in terms of the things that he has learned as a member or Taxi Cab Authority staff, he cannot testify to that material. That is all I am saying.
Understood, completely. Has Steven sworn in?
Yes, he has.
Okay.
But, Mr. Carson, are you going to make a record?
Yes, sir, yes. Under NAC, I did not know any of this information up until Mr. Armstrong just said that, and...
You didn't know what information?
That he used to be a former employee of the Taxi Cab Authority. But along those same lines, the rules and the regulations are very, very clear, and it says 706.888 appearances subsection 5. No former employee of the Authority or member of the Authority general staff may appear as a witness or expert witness before the Authority in any proceeding on behalf of other parties without the permission of the Authority. Now, obviously, I was behind, I didn't know this, but they knew who he was, it was, they should have brought this up to you guys earlier and allowed me a chance to either ordire or make an offer of proof. This, it's been ongoing for three years.
Administrator Armstrong, do you have any objection to this person?
I have no objection to this person testifying, as long as the information is not relative to Taxi Cab Authority.
I don't read the regulation as restrictive as you do, Mr. Carson, so the witness can proceed.
Okay, Mr. Costantino, would you please state and spell your full name for the record?
His first name is Americo, A-M-E-R-I-C-O, last name Costantino, C-O-S-T-A-N-T-I-N-O.
Okay, welcome. We're going to just cut right to it. What is your current position with Whittlesey and Henderson?
Hired by Bell United, I'm a field agent slash road supervisor.
Okay, and Bell United is what?
The insurance.
The insurance company for Whittlesey and Henderson?
Henderson.
Okay, and, and you're a road supervisor?
Yes.
And as a road supervisor for the company, just generally describe what you do.
Day-to-day basis, I investigate accidents, risk management, loss prevention, day-to-day driving, I patrol, work with local law enforcements if our vehicles are involved, take information down for our adjuster, photograph, see day-to-day, secure the premises, make sure vehicles are not being driven legitimately.
Okay, so you're, you're out on the streets of Las Vegas watching the taxi cab industry work and operate?
Yes, the limousine.
Okay, and did I, at a certain point, give you an assignment to do some things for you?
Yes, you did.
And what, what did I ask you to do?
They asked me during my daily routine and shift to take photographs of different cab stands at different times throughout my shift.
Okay, and we've handed around a binder that has photographs in it, and you've had a chance to look through this?
Yes, sir.
Right? And what I'd like to do is walk through this very quickly with you and describe for the board what it is we're looking at, okay?
Yes, sir.
Can you just say generally what, what's contained in this binder? We're going to go through page by, not page by page, but pretty quickly.
Yes.
What, what is contained in the binder?
Photographs that I took personally during my shift.
Photographs of what?
Taxi cab stands in different areas of town, different times.
Okay.
For days.
And do all the photographs have dates on them?
Yes, they're date and timestamp.
And timestamp, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just go, I would say, day by day. So what's the, what's the first day that you took pictures?
February 17, 2022.
Okay, and what area of Las Vegas is this depicting?
This is the airport.
And what time of the day was this?
It was 7:41 to normal, like 19:41 hours.
Okay, so I'm not sure how many pictures on this day, but if you, if you flip through, you'll see, this depicts what?
This is the T1, Terminal 1 staging area taxi pit.
Okay.
As you can see from first page, it's full with the tail coming all the way out.
Okay. And it goes all the way through for about 10 pages, I suppose, on, on 17th?
Well, that, yeah, it's a day, but then it goes through, it goes a different area.
Okay, just describe what areas you took pictures.
Okay, this is T1 down in the pit, you see the lines, this is the tail, and I proceeded through the pit, and you see all lines filled to go up to pick up passengers.
Okay.
And then the next photo is the front of...
Can you just hold up which picture you're looking at?
This is to the, this is the front of the pit going, leading up, where they take that one, they take turns and go up around to pick up at the... And this shows on the same day, same, the same approximate time, you'll see a van there with one person in a sweatshirt. This shows the customers, the lack of customers in that time zone, and how many cabs do you have?
Okay.
On the ground prepared.
Okay, keep going.
Okay. This would be, next page is T3, this is Terminal 3 arrival, is about 1955 hours, which is 5:08, and you see the tail, the pit has lines in it. The next page, after that, is the tail that is formed from the arrivals all the way back to the pit.
Okay.
Page there is moving up closer to where the cabs pick up.
Okay.
And then there are the cabs that are staged actually waiting to be loaded further up, and the next one with the number 10 on it, this page right here, shows all those cabs at that time and no, no clients.
Okay, so this is the last picture on the 17th?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so now, let's go to the 18th of February, which is obviously the next day.
Yes.
And...
Same night, yes.
Oh, early morning.
Early morning, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I went from there to, I'm downtown now.
So now we're 2:00 in the morning the next day, right?
Yeah, well, the next day, but yes, the same shift.
Yeah, understood. What, what is depicted generally on the first page on February 18th?
This is the Binion's cab stand. This Casino Center, Fremont is just south of that, and behind there is Ogden.
Okay.
So between Ogden and Fremont on Casino Center.
And the next page depicts what?
Same thing, but the cab line, there's two parts of the cab line. There's the staging area where they pick up, there's the driveway to parking lot, and then there's a staging area behind that they come up and fill up in line. As you can see here from this picture, the full, it's full in the first part, and it is tailing into the second part where they're coming around the corner off of Ogden, eastbound Ogden to go southbound Casino Center.
Okay, and the next page?
Next page is from the other direction looking at Fremont Street.
Okay, same thing with the next page, I think?
Yes.
And then the next page?
This would be on Main Street. This would be the Plaza cab stand right here, the Plaza cab stand, and this is 2:00 in the morning, as you can see, it's a 3 to 4 K staging line, and in front of that is where Uber and Lyft pick up.
Okay, next page?
Luxor. This would be the next, for my next shift.
Okay.
This is the next day, this is the Luxor.
All right.
And as you can see, the cab from under the portage share there, the line is coming out and around.
All right, and the next page kind of shows that a little more clearly.
Yes, as you can see, it is a full cab line.
Meaning, meaning full of cabs, right?
Full of cabs, it's full of cab line, and then the next picture with the van shows why it's a full cab line.
Okay. All right, let's, let's move along, now we're at Mandalay Bay, right?
Which one was that?
This was the, that one, sir.
That is Luxor?
That, this is Luxor.
And the next, next one is...
Mandalay Bay, this is an introduction photo, I'm going to, the next page.
What time are we at?
We are now at 17:56 hours, which is 5:56.
6:00 PM roughly?
6:00 PM, 1800.
Okay.
All right, this is Mandalay Bay, and here is the cab line, not from the portage share, but as it's going back. This is the tail.
All right.
To come on in. Next page after that, you'll see a Whittlesey, and you'll see 55, 54 or 5, as it's going into where they load.
Okay.
Okay, then the tail goes back from there, straight through.
All right.
Next page, another view of the tail going in closer, and then that's where they pick up, that's where the doormen load the cabs in this area, and again, that's why the cabs are staged, it's such...
Why there's a long line of cabs.
Long line of cabs and shorter, and that's at 1800.
Okay.
This one would be...
Tom, so I don't, I don't want to interfere with the examination, but is there something important about the locations, or is this...
Just to show a variety of different locations around Las Vegas, that, that's really the purpose?
Well, the only reason I'm asking is I'm not, unless it's helpful to the board, I'm not sure, going page by page telling us the location, because the theme here is there's cabs out there in lots, in lots of places.
Right.
So I'm not trying to interfere with your...
No problem.
I'm just saying maybe some generalized questions.
You got it.
Because, unless, any board member feel differently about that?
No, I agree. Okay, we'll, we'll move along, let's, let's just...
I'm opposed to tell somebody how to try their case, but I don't think...
Okay, that's fine. Let's... Let's, so are all the pictures on the eighteenth? Let's see here, where is this?
The first one, or the back, back up to that one, after the Luxor? That would be.
After Mandalay Bay.
That's Luxor, and then after that is, this is the MGM.
Okay. Let's go to the.
That's the eighteenth.
Let's go to the nineteenth.
Okay.
If there is a, it looks like you go from eighteen to twenty-two.
Okay, then I was based off.
That's all right, so let's just generally describe what you witnessed on the twenty-second. You can pick a couple random pictures to describe.
Okay, again, the Plaza cab stand, same thing.
Just hold up whichever one.
Okay.
You can just pick a couple of random ones on the twenty-second.
And instead of being two o'clock in the morning, this is close to seven P.M., this is the Plaza cab stand, again, full cab, no people.
Okay. Pick like one more on the twenty-second, and then we'll move to the.
We go to Binions again, this is about seven o'clock, the same thing, loaded cab stand, no people.
Looks like the twenty-third is the next day?
Twenty-third.
Take a couple random ones and show them to the board, please.
Back at the airport again, T-one, again, four or five lines leading with the tail up to arrivals, and this is, and this is a little later, seven o'clock, and those are also pictures, and it goes the tail that goes all the way up.
Okay.
Reforms the same line.
Let's go to the twenty-fourth now.
Okay.
Pick a couple.
Okay. Okay, twenty-fourth, at twenty-one forty-eight hours, it's a picture of the T-one, I'm at seven, five, and now this is at nine forty-eight P.M. Again, with a tail coming way out, lines filled, and definitely enough cabs for whatever comes out. And then if you go a couple pages past that, at nine fifty P.M., it shows the cabs waiting, and there are no passengers, they're just standing there idle.
Thank you, sir, those are all the questions I have, Mr. Carson probably has some for you.
Okay, before we move on, can you, we're not sure you did, so did you qualify that this witness took these pictures, or accurate depictions of?
I did the accurate depiction part, but did you, you, your assignment was what?
To take pictures of different cab stands in different areas at different times of day during my week of work, and do random, just.
And did you take all of the pictures in this book?
The ones that I reviewed, yes, I personally took these photos.
Okay, and do these pictures accurately depict the taxi cab stands in various areas on the various dates and times that you took them?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Want to move?
I move to admit the, this binder. It's already an exhibit, but, yeah.
Oh, it's already in the?
I believe it is, yes.
I'm sorry, before it's admitted, can I make my record?
Sure.
Okay, or can we wait till after my cross-examination, maybe the answers will come?
Sure. Hi, before we begin cross, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, you do, okay, I'm sorry, I did not mean to overlook.
No problem, and I know it's more of a direct, as far as the dates and timestamps on each of the photographs, are those accurate?
Yes, they are.
And how do you know they were accurate?
Because I did digital entry.
Okay, as far as the, when you were taking the photographs, did you ever come up to a taxi cab stand that was empty and just not take a photograph of that?
No, I did my shift and went around.
So you didn't selectively not take a photograph because that taxi cab was empty?
No.
That's all I have.
For the record, there is a motion to admit that he wants to kind of like include in his cross, so let that go under the relaxed rules of evidence. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Mr. Constantino?
Yeah, you can call me Rico for short.
Rico?
Yes, sir.
I like that. When were you given this assignment?
I believe February.
February of what? Twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
That was the first time Mr. Traptan had asked you to do this for you? Okay. Let's go back to that, I mean, what did he tell you, what did he want?
What I just said, he wanted me to go around and take pictures of cab areas, airports at different times and different days.
How did you choose these particular locations?
They're within my scope of duties in the county when I'm regularly patrolling, doing my job as a road supervisor.
Okay, so are you out on the road your entire shift?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's the point of road supervisor, Mr. Bell doesn't like us hanging in the office.
Okay, so you're out?
Twelve hours at least.
Okay, and how many days a week?
Four. I work the overnight.
Is there anybody else that's in that same position as you?
Yes, my counterpart.
Just two of you?
On that overnight shift.
Okay. How about the day shift?
There's five of us total. It's twenty-four-seven.
Okay, and I believe you said your employer is Bell United?
Yes.
Okay, that's an insurance company, correct?
Yes.
That's not a transportation company, is it?
No.
Okay, and your responsibilities as a road supervisor were to investigate accidents, and then you were speaking really fast, so I couldn't write?
So, risk management, loss prevention, drivers, reckless driving, write reports, daily reports to the owners, and it's called SDR, Supervisor Daily Report, what I've seen, spot checks, the accident reports, what information I've gathered for the adjuster, what photos I've taken, if law enforcement is involved, get case numbers, get the information from the other people, information exchange.
Sounds like a bunch of legal stuff, if there's an accident, some problems, you kind of just fix everything or take care of it?
Well, do information exchange, the law enforcement will handle fixing anything if they're called.
Okay, do you have any background in law enforcement?
Yes.
And what is that?
I was an officer for North Las Vegas from nineteen eighty-five to eighty-seven, went to State Academy, Post Academy, graduated valedictorian. Then I came back into the industry in two thousand and five, went to another academy, graduated valedictorian, and I was hired by the state of Nevada Taxi Captain Authority.
And when was that?
Two thousand and five, September twenty-sixth.
And how long were you there?
A little, almost twelve years.
Twelve years. So, you say five to seventeen? Two thousand and five, did you say?
Two thousand and five, on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and five, I was hired.
Twelve years.
Almost, yes.
With the state of Nevada?
Yes.
Okay, and your position? You said was investigator or officer?
I was an airport control officer first, I got promoted investigator, I was the lead investigator, and I got promoted to senior investigator.
Okay, and why did you quit?
Medical.
Okay, and when were you hired by Bell United?
July twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, should I, I kind of jumped, was there anything else in between that two thousand and seventeen and the hiring date with Bell?
Yes, I was sick with bilateral polar, pulmonary obolism.
Okay.
I had blood clots.
Well, I've been, I've been working that.
I was sick for three years.
Okay, all right, and then after that, you went to work for Bell?
I went to work for Allied Security, securing state buildings, and then I worked for Bell.
Had you ever done something like this for Bell in the past?
No.
Okay. Is it your duty, one of your job responsibilities, to determine the needs of the traveling public?
I don't understand what we're.
You're not here to tell people, or when you get on the road saying, hey, there's a taxi line outside of Mandalay Bay, send cabs over to help them?
Oh, yes, we have something called a DT-five.
What's that? Oh, well, that's just the, the meter, right?
Yes, the meter, and I directly have direct, direct message contact with all the drivers.
Okay, and how often do you use the DT-five to deter cabs to locations?
When necessary.
Percentage?
Sometimes I don't have to, sometimes, now and then, yeah, when they're T-one, they need to be a T-three. When T-one is like that, T-three is empty, I send them over.
Okay.
But that's only Whittlesey and Whittlesey Blue Cab and Henderson, that's the only two I have pretty deep to.
Okay, and what about for limousines, they're not on the DT-five?
That's over radio.
Okay. But if you see somebody within a limo line, would you call your limos?
Well, yeah, when they come out of the airport, we have a booth there that does that, and drivers are assigned that, and that's their, that's their specialty.
Okay. Did he tell you the purpose, why he wanted you to take photographs of McCarran or taxi cab stands?
He just told me he wanted the pictures.
Didn't tell you why?
Not that I recall.
Should I ever take pictures of places, hotels, restaurants, where there was a taxi line?
Well, there was a taxi line, yeah.
So you mean a passenger line, not a cab?
Sorry, where passengers are in line for, at a taxi cab stand.
Oh, that happens, yes, I've never taken a picture of it.
Okay.
That's, that was after my assignment.
Well, so to say, was, was part of your assignment to, to limit to the locations where there were no pictures of lines, but we want to show the ones with a bunch of cabs, no people?
He didn't give me a specific place, he said randomly, take pictures of lines, just wherever you are, take pictures.
Nothing to do with passengers or passenger count?
There was passengers, there was passengers, there was passengers, and some of them, some not.
Okay. Let me ask you those questions, tell me if you just go to, your first day?
Would be the seventeenth, I believe.
Correct, okay, so you got a very first picture, you got a picture of a bunch of cabs, where is this?
This is Terminal One, McCarran, or Harry Reid.
Okay. Let me ask you this, how long, if you know, with this cab at the very end of the picture, how long did it have to wait before it got a passenger?
I do not know that, sir.
Do you know how many average trips a cab does in Las Vegas per day?
I do not.
Okay, would you be surprised if it's around fifteen?
No.
Cabs, or passengers per day?
That wouldn't surprise me.
Okay, so this guy here at the very end was still getting his fifteen passengers per day, regardless of the line, is that, would that be fair to say?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't assume what he did.
You didn't stick around to see how long these people were in line?
No, sir, as you see from the photographs and the timestamps, I've just moved through it.
Okay, let's look at this, the second one, there's a bunch of, bunch of cabs.
Same place.
Same place.
This is actual pit, sir.
This is that down?
This is the actual pit, the prior picture was the tail.
Right, so this is where they, they stage, and then they go up to the top and pick up the people that are going through the Disneyland type?
Correct.
Whatever fences or whatever they want to call them?
Correct, sir.
Do you have any idea how long it took for this guy at the very end, looks like a white bumper?
It's a new cab.
That's, okay, how long did he have to wait at the airport, airport before he got a ride?
No, that's actually desert, I don't know, sir, I wasn't there.
Okay, you didn't stick around to see how long they were waiting there, you just saw a bunch of cars and then moved on to the next place? Okay, despite all these pictures, you were sitting here with Cheryl's testimony, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, despite all these pictures of cabs, cabs, no people, cabs, no people, she testified that Henderson and Whittlesey are profitable companies, making money, is that a fair statement?
That's what I heard.
Okay, do you have any reason to doubt her testimony?
Nope.
These photographs don't change your mind as to whether or not they're profitable or not?
Doesn't change my mind, if she says she's profitable, she's profitable.
Okay, so, obviously, with the amount of cabs that are here, and the amount of passengers, a cab company can still be profitable.
Objection beyond the scope of.
Oh.
There's no scope objections under the AK.
Okay.
Ask and answer?
Done.
Ask again.
Oh, okay, so despite all these pictures of this booklet showing cabs, cabs, no people, no people, it's clear that taxi cab companies are still profitable, is that your understanding?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
Okay. As a road supervisor, you're out there a lot?
Yes, sir.
More than anybody in this room, I would imagine. Have you ever come across pictures such as these ones here? This is at the convention center, you see, are you familiar with this taxi stand as a road supervisor?
Yes.
Okay, so you know that this is a legit taxi stand and there's a line of people, correct?
Correct.
Okay, these, no cabs, right?
No cab.
Is this something that you see in your job responsibilities where you have to radio in or DT-five them? Say, hey, get some cabs over there?
Mm-hmm, at certain events, yes, large events like that, or Allegiant Stadium, yes.
Okay, now when there's a large event, Allegiant Stadium, you obviously have heads up, you know that that thing, World of Concrete, ends at five o'clock, so you gotta be, gotta be on top of it, right?
Correct.
Okay, not on top of it, would you agree?
I didn't know it was before, after that, sir, but that's your, no cabs.
Okay, this is also the convention center, this is the second taxi cab that's underneath the east hall?
I know where that is.
Okay, and you see the line of people?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay. Tell me this, is this line of people, is that good for the traveling public to have a line like that? Would it be better to get these people off and move in, and to restaurants, to shows, to gamble?
Yes, it's always good to get the people moving.
Okay. How about this crazy one here from Mandalay Bay? Are you familiar with this taxi stand as a road supervisor?
Yes, sure I am.
Okay, so this is down by the valet, and where you walk in and park and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Have you ever seen a line like this at Mandalay Bay before?
Nope, was this after an event?
I'm just asking if you've seen a line.
Not like this.
Have you ever seen a line like that in your term as a road supervisor for Bell United?
Yes.
So there are times when there are lines?
Yes.
And there's no cabs, and there are times when there are cabs and no people?
Of course.
Okay, so it's ebbs and flows, does that sound all right?
But as, as Vivin said, it depends on the size of the event, I mean, those look like events that cabs run in and out, they do this at the airport constantly.
Okay. How about this one here at Caesar's Palace? Are you familiar with this taxi stand? And what does that picture depict?
It depicts one desert cab and a line of folks.
Okay, again, your testimony would be, it's better for the traveling public to move them, get them moving to their destination?
That's, that's all our taxi cab's goal is.
Okay, Cosmopolitan? Are you familiar with this taxi stand?
Yeah.
It's a mess, isn't it?
It is.
Okay, I understand, but again, lines of people, no cabs, contrary to your photos of lots of cabs, no people. Correct? How about the Bellagio, are you familiar with this taxi cab stand?
Yes, I am, they come up from the underneath.
Okay, depict, what does this photo depict, in your opinion?
Well, you wouldn't be able to see a cab, because they come from underneath, if there was, if there were cabs there, he'd be here.
Okay, so right here, I show the cab coming up.
Okay, yeah, see, they're coming up from that.
Coming up, right, so. Line of people, have you seen any cabs?
On this one, I told you why, this would be a better picture.
Okay. Aria, are you familiar with this taxi stand?
I am familiar.
Okay, another mess? No, just itself, the taxi cab stand, not, not the picture.
And these, this, at this stand also, they also come from underground.
Okay. Were you paid separately to do this, or was this part of your Bell United salary?
This, oh, no, that's normal work hours.
Okay, so you didn't require anything else, payments, or services, or anything? Okay, so you didn't require anything else, payments or services or anything like that?
Nope.
What if, I mean, let's go back to your first, your second photo, actually.
Yes, sir.
This is down, downstairs at McCarran, right?
Yes, sir.
Or Henry, Harry Reid?
The airport?
Yeah, airport's easier. When you see this, does this out of the normal?
Depends what day of week it is. I've seen it like this and I've seen it move. It just depends. It's at this time at this place, this is what I took.
Okay. Now, have you seen your road supervisor responsibilities? Have you seen an influx, influx of taxi cab passengers beginning with two thousand and twenty-one, that's kind of the end of COVID to now?
Yes, there's, there's more people flying. It's not as restricted.
Okay, and has Las Vegas benefited from the more people flying?
I hope so.
They, is, are you aware that Harry Reid broke this single, single month visitor count earlier this year?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. But out there, you see a more, I would say more of a demand for the
I see cabs moving along, but within my purview, I have several other companies I have to keep an eye on. I have executive captain, Bell, shuttle buses, cab companies, two tow truck companies.
Oh, okay, as Bell United
As I, because I'm not, yes, I'm not just a Bell train, I'm not with the transportation company, I'm with the insurance company. So I have a lot to my purview. So it's not only taxi cabs I take care of.
Right, you mentioned executive, that's a limousine company, right? You do presidential?
There, well, presidents or captain now emerged, and I do that.
Yes, that's another limousine.
And we do all the house limousines for Caesar property also.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions? Can you redirect?
Nope.
I have no question.
No questions.
Well, I've got one, and perhaps you went over it to Mr. Carson. I, I couldn't see those pictures.
I'm sorry.
When, when you made your rounds taking the pictures, did you ever find a cab stand that had no cabs on it?
Well, you'll see, uh, not, not during this time.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
No, I was taking
So, I mean, you were told to take pictures of the, the cab lines. Okay, so you ignored those where there were no cabs?
No, 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 I got cab areas, just randomly pick places, take pictures.
Okay, so every cab stand had a cab there?
That, that night. That, like I said, I have multiple companies that are doing, so when I, when I thought of it, broke off, okay, here, blip, blip, blip. And then, you know, I don't know what I was doing, Fred, I can't tell, but there'd be an accident, I'd be called off. Cab broke down, limousine broke down, something else that I'd have to
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little surprised that every cab stand had at least one cab there. Go figure. Okay, that was my question.
One follow-up to that?
Yeah.
The photos that are listed here are not bait stamped or anything like that. Are there more photos that you took with your phone or your camera that are not in this package?
No, I took them on an S D card and that was it, and turned them into Mr. Traptan.
Okay, so when you look through this, can you utter, can you say that these are all the photos that you took and there are not some that are missing?
I don't believe there are any missing. I took, I believe it was ninety-nine or a hundred and one, I believe.
Okay, so we've got ninety-nine photos or a hundred and one, which one was it?
Unless I refresh my memory on my board, I don't know, it's between ninety-nine and one oh one, I believe. If I can recall.
That was it, my question?
There's a pending motion to
Yeah, I heard the motion and wanted to do it, but Mr. Constantino stated that he was not given this subject or this project until February of two thousand and twenty-two. Now, during the course of the hearing, the hearing officer, Mr. Cassidy, said all exhibits must be produced by November thirtieth or twenty-first, one of those days in two thousand and twenty-one. And so three months after he's getting new documents and new photographs to be produced in a, in a matter that's supposed to have all that stuff included in two thousand and twenty-one. Did you have? Did you have this before today?
Yes, I got it May of two thousand and twenty-two, or I'm sorry, March two thousand and twenty-two. I'm going to admit it. Your Carson, I'm going to admit it, that your objection probably goes more to weight than invisibility. Any other questions for this witness?
No questions.
Your excuse?
Thank you.
What do we have left for today?
That was my last witness.
Okay.
I have Mr. Baylen on behalf of Yellow Check or Star.
And is that your only witness?
That is the only witness.
Would anybody object if we recessed for today and come back at nine in the morning?
How many witnesses we have tomorrow? Just one?
Just one.
Yeah, so.
Hi.
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
And then closing's after, or? I guess, I guess if Mr. Carson has rebuttal.
Mr. Carson can go into rebuttal then?
That'll be done tomorrow then.
We might be done tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, can I ask one, one thing?
Sure.
This is just to clarify, what we talked about off the record was the amount of time that they have for their closing was allotted for thirty minutes times three, so an hour and a half?
Correct.
I was wondering if I would be able to grant it that same amount, hour and a half for an hour, and then a half an hour for rebuttal? After listening to these guys for hour and a half, I think I should have at least some time to address their issues.
Okay, I'm going to tell you, if we, I'm going to retain the order I gave. If we are moving such that we will be done this week, I will entertain opening up more time.
Just as, just for the commission chairman's position, I don't believe Mr. Baylen's testimony will be more than an hour to, to max.
Okay.
Depending upon how long Brent crosses, I can say his direct testimony will be consistent with about Cheryl's time.
So I think we more likely than not, I will, Mike, at the time I set the limitations on oral argument, I was thinking we were going to be running up to the very last minute time on Thursday. And so if there is more time, I will entertain a different result. My time, but I'm going to keep that locked in right now.
Should I notify Mr. Mr. Awad that closings may be tomorrow, so that he will be present to do this closing?
Um, yeah, would you do that to let him know if he's, if he's going to close?
Should he be here?
And if we do not finish tomorrow, we would be going
On Thursday, because we have a regular scheduled meeting on Wednesday, and we don't have
Don't say that.
It's a, it's a facilities issue.
Don't say that.
Okay, we thank you for the accommodation ending earlier.
Thank you.